All right, thank you so much for being here with us this evening. Today is Monday, December 6th, 2021. At this time, we'll proceed with calling the meeting to order. Rule call, Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes, here. Councilmember Rodriguez will not be joining us this evening. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Tara Walter, here. Before we stand for the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to dedicate this evening's moment of silence to Mr. Aldafo Harpo Salia. He is a Florence native who survived the Americas worst-at-sea disaster in World War II. He received a Congressional Gold Medal with other survivors last year. And he passed away recently at the age of 94 years of age. He has contributed significantly to our community, and he will be deeply missed. Interesting story about Mr. Salia. We had an act of Congress happen in the town of Florence with the rededication of the post office in his honor. So there's a lot of history, and if you would like to learn more, encourage you to stop by. And lots of family members, the museum, and our visitor center can help provide further education. All right, our first item this evening is Call to the Public. Call to the Public is open. I do have one at this time for Mrs. Stacy Gramazio, who is a spokesperson for Florence Copper, manager of Communication and Public Affairs.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, Stacy Gramazio, representing Florence Copper, 1575 West Hunt Highway in Florence. And hello, Madam Mayor and Council. I'd just like to, on behalf of the company, I'd like to say that we'd like to express how pleased we are to partner with the town of Florence for provision of emergency services for our commercial in-situ copper recovery facility, because it represents the first time that the town and Florence Copper have joined together in mutual fashion. We know this is the first of many good partnerships between the town of Florence and Florence Copper. Thank you to the Council, and thank you to Operations Battalion Chief Jim Walter for the hard work, work that he put into this memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online or in person that would also like to speak at Call to the Public at this time? Okay, we're gonna go ahead. Oh. Do you want to speak at the beginning or the end, Mr. Foster? Come on up. We have a nice packed room and...
I just want to thank the Council, town staff, for the opportunity to hold this year's 89th Annual Florence Junior Parade. It was a huge success. We're still wrapping things up. If you didn't get a chance to make it out there, I provided Mr. Billingsley with a copy of the program and some information that we provided for the rodeo. So we just wanted to thank, on behalf of the committee, the rodeo committee, myself, the family, just wanted to thank the town for allowing us to do that, so.
Well, thank you. It was a huge success, the parade, the dance, the rodeo event itself. And I mentioned before at the previous meeting, the rodeo grounds really do look fantastic. So.
Great.
Excellent partnership, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is heavy. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, we will go ahead and close our first Call to the Public. Item number six, Public Hearing and Presentations. This is our public hearing to receive citizen comments on the proposed zone change for APN 200-05004H from Single Family Ranchette, R1R, to Single Family Residential, R118, and APN 250-004G from Rural Agriculture, RA10, to Single Family Residential, R118. And first reading of ordinance number 70921, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, approving a zone change from Single Family Ranchette, R1R, and Rural Agriculture, RA10, to Single Family Residential, R118, for 801 West Adamsville Road, Assessor Parcel Numbers 200-05004H and 200-05004ZG and PG 2144. Ms. Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Council. As stated in the RCA, this is a rezoning for two parcels owned by the Salias off of Adamsville. They are looking to rezone from the Single Family Ranchette to the Single Family Residential, and from Rural Agriculture to also Single Family Residential. One of the parcels does have a single-family residence on it, and the other is currently vacant. So currently, the owner owns three parcels, but only two of them are being rezoned. So the 801 West Adamsville, which is the very top one that's in red, will be from Rural Ranchette to the Single Family, and then the one below is the Rural Agriculture going to Single Family. For public outreach, we have mailed notices to those within 300 feet of this property. Advertisements have been posted in the local newspaper. Public hearing notices have also been posted on the sign, which is on the site. You can see it from Adamsville. Citizen Review Meeting was held on November 4th. We did not have any comments on that day. We did get some phone calls from people living 300 feet around the property, and they were just asking what the rezoning was for and how it affected their property, and those comments were addressed. Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing on November 4th as well. And as of today, we are going to be doing the first reading and public hearing, and then January 3rd will be the second reading and action. We found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Town of Florence 2020 general plan. The proposed zoning would bring consistency to these parcels. The owner is looking to make the zoning consistent. So if they do future combinations, split, or they plan to sell it, then the zonings are the same, and whatever happens, it's going to go much smoother than if they were two separate zonings. There will be no disputes. And also, if they were to be split, they could make more lots. The parcels also meet the minimum lot requirements from our code, and the owners have signed the Prop 207 waiver. Planning and Zoning has forwarded a favorable recommendation, based on the condition in the report, that whatever is developed on these parcels follow the town's codes and requirements. With that, we have the Salias here present if you have any questions. And with that, my presentation is done.
Council, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Since the owners are here, do they have anything that they would like to say or anything that they'd like to add? I do want to say thank you for attending.
No, they don't have anything.
Perfect. All right.
This is the public hearing?
So yes, this is the public hearing, and this is the presentation. So this will come again.
Madam Mayor, we have to open the public hearing.
Yes, we do. So it is open. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Is there anybody online that would like to speak? All right, seeing no such movement, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Item B, this is a presentation celebrating Jackie Moore's retirement after 14 and a half years of dedicated service. At this time, I'm going to call forward Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Jackie, I'm gonna try not to cry, because I always cry about my staff when something happens with them. But I don't believe I will cry tonight because of her happiness. And it would have been no good me trying to talk her out of retiring, because I knew from the look on her face when she came to talk to me that she had her mind made up and she was joyous about her decision. But Jackie has worked for us for 14, a little bit over 14 and a half years, and she came to us from another agency that did payroll, a governmental agency. So she was a perfect fit for the town. And she's here tonight with her son Ian and her partner Mark, and I'm very happy that they're here. But she has been a joy to work with. She's one of those kind of low-key employees that you never know is out and about. They are in their office, doing their work to the best of their abilities. And believe me, she did her work to the best of her abilities. She's the kind of person that studies. She studies everything that she does, so she's well-informed, and she does not make very many mistakes at all over these past years. She's done payroll, and she's done a heck of a job training the new person that took over her duties right now. I just want to say that Jackie, I wish her the best in everything that she does, and I'm going to miss her terribly, not just her face every day. She was a confidante. She's one of those employees that she comes into your office and makes your day whole brighter with her attitude and everything that she says. So I wish her all the best. She has things that she has to do, personal, and we want her to do them. So I appreciate everything that you did for us, and so do the employees, because if you hadn't been here, they wouldn't have gotten paid. Also, I want to just also add that she was one of the loyalist, most consistent, dependable persons in my office and a joy to work with.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I have in front of me a nice award. It says Making the Difference, awarded to Jackie Moore for your loyal dedication and unwavering commitment. Thank you for your significant contributions towards our goals and your indispensable support of our mission, Town of Florence 2007 through 2021. Mayor.
So I've had the privilege of knowing this Jackie for over a decade, and as well as my partner Mark.
They always looked out for you every single week, twice a week. And so really, like in Florence, we're all family. And Jackie, you are going to be missed from this family. Well, I can tell you, anytime we had questions, as well as Becky, Jackie's always right there to answer them. And want to tell us a little bit about your plans? Hopefully, travel, maybe?
I'll probably get to the travel, but I have other things I want to develop in my life and other things I want to do. And like Becky mentioned, I have some personal items I want to take care of. But, you know, sometimes you have to say goodbye to go on to other things.
Well said.
Let's give her a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Virgie. So this next item is one of my favorite items, and it is an honor this evening to celebrate. Ms. Virgie Feliz, come on up. We have an amazing employee incentive committee, and Virgie's on this committee. Also, as an employee, I can tell you, as an employee, I can tell you, so many people reach out to her. They have questions, they need help. She is right there, ready to help them, whether it has to do with any benefit questions or a wide range you receive. So we have a process in the town of Florence that we've developed where we have nominations that come in, and they are read anonymously, and the committee goes through them, and they select the employee upon their consensus. And this month, we are celebrating you. And is the individual here that nominated her that would like to read into the record? Or would you like to read Ms. Rebecca Jimenez?
She is Catherine.
Ms. Catherine, come on over. Yes. So you know how you have that two peas in a pod thing? I always put you two in a pod together.
That's sweet, but I didn't nominate her, so.
Who nominated her, do we know?
It has to be anonymous, and they don't want me to say.
Do you have the letter? Would you mind reading it?
Okay. All right, so this is the actual nomination, and then I have a little bit to add to it. And it's in the employee newsletter for this month. My nominee is a true outstanding employee. I would like to nominate Virgie Felix. Virgie is always, always has a smile on her face, a positive attitude, and always professional each and every day. Virgie has an excellent reputation with all town staff, as she is the go-to girl when it comes to employees, managers, and directors needing advice, information, or direction. She communicates with direct and indirect contacts and is very resourceful. Virgie's customer service is sincere and extraordinary. If she doesn't have the answer to a question or a situation, she will find the resolution and follow up with the individual. I feel Virgie is a leader, not only in her position, but as an individual. She is always willing and able to make time for others at work and in the community, and Virgie never asks or wants anything in return. Virgie goes above and beyond and is very giving, thoughtful, and humble, always trying to boost morale and encourage the positive in others at work. I have the utmost respect for Virgie because of her integrity to the town and employees as her coworkers. Her performance is remarkable, and she is dedicated to the town of Florence. I am honored to have Virgie on our team. Thank you. So in addition, in addition, although I did not nominate Virgie, I truly appreciate all that she does for the HR department and for our organization. Virgie has been here for 14 years and has grown in her abilities and responsibilities. Virgie is often the fir-, well, no, Virgie is the first face employees see when beginning their employment, and she welcomes them sincerely into our organization. She is often the last person employees see as they are leaving service with the town, and she sends them off with well wishes. Virgie works behind the scenes, organizing events and celebrations that we all enjoy. We all appreciate Virgie, and it is an honor to work alongside such a wonderful employee and person. That's from my heart.
All right, so Ms. Virgie Felix, we have a certificate for you. We also will have a $75 gift certificate to a business of your choice in the town of Florence to continue supporting local.
Awesome, thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words? Well, basically, you know, I've been with the town almost, you know, 14 and a half years. Jackie and I started working in the same year. So seeing Jackie leave and me stay behind just kind of broke my heart, because I thought her and I were gonna see it to the end. But her dream came before mine, so, you know, I wish her well. But with that being said, I have wonderful, wonderful coworkers, a wonderful supervisor, and all the department directors that I get to work with. I'm very fortunate that I'm in that position, that my position is so well-rounded, that I get to work from people from the top to people from the bottom. And we all appreciate each other, we all work well together, and I'm just very fortunate that I get to be part of such a great team. And even though I'm from Coolidge, I'm in love with the citizens from Florence. So even though, you know, my heart is at home in Coolidge, but a big chunk of that is also here in the town of Florence with everyone.
It's our sister city. Well.
We'll cooperate with our sister city.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I see your family taking pictures. Do you want to join us, or do you?
I don't know, there's quite a few here.
This is for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item D, Presentation on the Water Policy Recommendations Report. Ms. Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Council. Tonight, I am here to relay finally information on the Town of Florence Water Sustainability Report, or at least the second phase in it, which is the Water Policy Recommendations. See, there are three phases. We were doing the growing, from the Growing Water Smart Workshop that occurred back in February of 2020, a long time ago. We completed an action plan of what do we want to see in terms of water conservation, use, and just overall thinking of how water will play a role in Florence's development. From that, we went through Phase 1, which was to develop a full water sustainability report, but we developed the scope of work from that. And that came from the original presentation that I brought to you a long time ago. So here, we have the document for the second phase, which is the Water Policy Recommendations. Now, all of this will be folded into, or taken bits and pieces, will be pulled to go into the water element of the general plan. So there is the end, and there is the use of what we're putting together. So staff utilized grant money from the Sonoran Institute and the General Plan Update Funds to finance these sustainability reports in this overall process. So Phase 2, Water Policy Recommendation Report. So what this is supposed to do is identify possible water policies in different peer reviews and to provide analysis on what recommendations would be good for the town of Florence. The resources we used were an expert from the University of Arizona Water Resources. Her name was Ashley Hollinger. She was able to put all this report together, gather the research, and help us put together our committees and our review sessions. We also got support from the Sonoran Institute, who provided this as a grant. Her name was Amanda Smith, and she oversaw that. So this phase included putting together a technical advisory committee. We had several meetings, and we utilized information from Ashley, and I managed to develop these conservation recommendations. And we provided comments on these recommendations and gave suggestions during our TAC meetings. And these groups' meetings all developed and rolled into the Water Sustainability Report, or this policy, which is what I brought forward. So the members of the TAC meeting, meeting members, came from different affiliations and stakeholders throughout the county, Florence, and several other water people or businesses that are within the Florence jurisdiction or just outside. Now, the recommendations that came from this policy report are listed above, as in the report, and they are the update of development reviews and approval process that includes water supply considerations, develop and implement a sustainable water allocation policy for all new development, establish and implement targeted water conservation efficiency programs, advance and adaptive water quality initiative, adopt and use practices to protect valuable water assets, enhance water portfolio, and to collaborate with agricultural water users. These are all recommendations that were given in this policy. So it's not something that we have to do, but it's something we can look into integrating that would probably best fit with our community. So with this policy wrapped up, our third phase is to work with a company called Weston Resources to bring us all together to complete the Water Sustainability Report. And right now, they're working on the, more of the data of populations and what water resources are available now to put together those final pieces. So Weston will share their findings with the General Plan Update Consultants, Michael Baker, and then those will all come and tie together to make our big water element, which is the end product of our planning that started back in 2020. So if the Council has any questions, I'd be open to answering them. Me and Brent, we'll be open to answering them now.
If you have any questions, Councilmember Hughes, go ahead.
When do you expect to get the results back for the third phase?
So the third phase is the Water Sustainability Report. We're working on modeling right now. So I think we should be completed with, after we model, after we come up with the draft results, we periodically have TAC meetings with that same TAC. We should get through that TAC process in the early spring. And it's important that we do, because the Water Sustainability Report will become the water element in the general plan, and we have to get that prepared to go to the voters.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you very much for your presentation on that.
Thank you.
Item number seven is our Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1. We're going to go ahead and call that board to order. Rule call, Board Member Mendoza.
Here.
Member Neal.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here.
Member Anderson.
Here.
Member Cortez. Member Walter, here, Chair, here. Item C, Discussion Approval Disapproval, to accept the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1 audit. At this time, I will have At this time, I will have Ms. Rebecca Jimenez present.
Mayor and council, CFD Number One and CFD Two audits are being presented tonight by Ben Herr of Fester Chapman, our professional auditors, our independent auditors. The CFDs have to have separate auditors because they are political subdivisions of the town. They require special auditing, they require special reporting, and they also require that we provide detail on, excuse me, just a moment, I need to get my agenda item. I was trying to read from my book over here, so let me switch gears over there. We have to show all of our debt within both CFDs, the existing and overlapping debt. So given this, I'm going to have Carl go ahead and do the PowerPoint presentation, and Mr. Ben Herr is in Yuma right now, so he's reaching out through Zoom to discuss these, both of these issues.
Did you just say he's in India right now? Oh, Yuma.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I was...
That's okay, he's coming in.
Thinking of the time zone difference and that he's still in a suit.
No, Yuma.
Good evening, mayors and councilmembers. My name is Ben Herr with Fester Chapman. Thank you for the opportunity to present the audit results for the CFD Number One, and even allowing me to participate in the meetings remotely. So as you can see, we have performed the financial statements audit for the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One for the year ended June 30 of 2020. Here is our result. Next slide, please. So basically, this presentation will include our audit, our research summaries, our opinion for the financial statements audit we have performed, and then our communications back to the councils. Next slide, please. So basically, the audit has been performed for the financial statements of the CFD Number One. We make sure all the presentation, the statements and the presentation of the financial statements are in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles, and that we issued a modified opinion, which is basically clean opinions, we didn't have any misstatements in the financial, material misstatements in the financial statements. And also, we don't have any other deficiencies to be reported in terms of internal controls, the district's internal controls over financial reportings. Next slide, please. Second part of the communications is report to the councils. Basically, this is a summary of the results, not only the result itself, but basically describe all the things that happened during the audit process, starting with, there is, excuse me, starting with there's any changes in the standards or policies, and we also communicated the sensitive estimation, estimates or disclosure information, including the financial statements. We didn't have any difficulty encounters during the audit. We do not have any disagreements with the management for the audit itself. Next slide. So that is the end of my presentation for the CFD Number One, the audit result, and if you have any questions regarding that, please let me know.
Town council, do you have any questions regarding the audit?
No.
All right. I want to make sure in future presentations, we just get a copy of our new town logo over to the agencies. But otherwise, everything looked great, and I appreciate it, Mr. Herr.
Thank you.
So we do need discussion, approval, disapproval, so since there is no discussion, at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the annual financial statement for fiscal year 2020-21. That's presented in item seven C.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item D is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, October 18, 2021, special meeting minutes. Does any member of our board have any questions or comments regarding the minutes in the agenda? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve these Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, October 18, 2021, special meeting minutes.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Proceeding with calling the meeting to order. Board Member Mendoza.
Here.
Board Member Neal.
Here.
Board Member Hughes.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Cortez.
Here.
And Chair Walter, here. At this time, we'll proceed with item C, which is discussion approval, disapproval, to accept the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two Audit, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Again, this is Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two Audit, and I'll go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Ben Herr from Fester Chapman.
So mayor and councilmembers, again, this is Ben Herr from Fester Chapman. This presentation is Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, the audit result of the financial statements audit we have performed for the district number two. Can you just go, please, next slide, please. This audit result, this presentation is including the presentation of audit results for the financial statements audit performed, and also auditor's communications to the councils. Next slide, please. We have performed the audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles to ensure that financial statements are presented in all material aspects in accordance with the gap. And then we issued a modified opinion on our financial statements, which means that one of the cleanest opinions, there's no material misstatements noted included in the financial statements itself. And also, we also communicate there was no deficiencies reported in the district's internal controls over financial reporting. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, the auditors are required to communicate the things that happens throughout the audit process, including there's no changes in the standards or the policies, and then there are some sensitive estimates or disclosure information included in the financial statements. We did not have any difficulties, encounters during the audit, and we not having any disagreements with the management. That is end of my presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Board, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing no such move, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the annual financial statements for Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two for year 2020-2021.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item D is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, July 6, 2021, special meeting minutes. Are there any questions, comments regarding that item in your agenda packet? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, July 6, 2021, special meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
I make a motion, we adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility meeting, District Number Two.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
I make a motion, we adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community District Facility meeting, District Number Two.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is an approval of memorandum of understanding between the Town of Florence and Florence Copper Incorporated for provision of emergency services to the Florence Copper Commercial and Situ Copper Recover Facility. Item B is approval of the federal requirement and sign the settlement agreements with the previously referred to distributors and manufacturer. Item C is to accept a $5,000 gift for the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center from Mr. Art Heisner Jr. in memory of Eunice Heisner. And item D is to accept the register of demands ending October 31, 2021, in the amount of Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. I would like to remove items A, B, and C, just, there's some discussion points. With that, I just need an approval for item D.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda, item D, and remove items A, B, and C for further discussion.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. All right, so I'm just going to take it in the exact order that they are listed on the agenda items. The first one is 11A, and I just had a question. I don't know if this would fall under Town Manager or Presenter, Battalion Chief Walter. In item 3.6, it talked about 30 calendar days after EPA and the ADEQ startup, and I didn't know if staff could provide us with an update on where, or Ms. Gromasio perhaps, where they are regarding their endeavor and if there's a timeline.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have Stacy in the audience. Two key provisions in the agreement before you is the $35,000 payment that's effective, I believe, 10 days following approval by council, and then there's an additional $10,000 within a certain number of days of the approval of the commercial permit. I don't know that timing, but hopefully Ms. Gromasio can help us out.
Sure. Um, thank you, Mayor Walter. The timing of our draft EPA permit is truly in the hands of the EPA, so that is their timeline, and I do not know when the official draft permit will be issued. Once it is, however, there is likely a 45-day public comment period, which will end with a public hearing. I believe it will be a virtual public hearing. That being said, you may have seen a recent Tseko press release where we have seen that draft, so we know that it's imminent. However, it's now in the hands of the EPA as to when they will decide to officially issue that draft permit. So, doesn't completely answer your question, I know, but...
No, I appreciate you being here.
It's in the good hands of the EPA, and it's a process that we want to get right and not rush, so it's, we're waiting for them to give us that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
This is, I guess, for the fire chief. Have we looked at what's necessary to respond to a chemical spill?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Anderson, we certainly are aware of the challenges that an incident will pose, and the coordinated efforts that will have to follow immediately thereafter, they would obviously vary depending upon the incident. It's not intended to be comprehensive immediately, but with collaboration with our mutual aid partners, we believe that we have an understanding of what that would entail.
Do we have to get any additional equipment to handle a chemical spill?
I'd like to defer to my battalion chief, but he does have information that he can speak to that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, as we were working through this, you know, your concerns were the same as all of ours at the table. Our region in general, you know, with a large spill of the chemicals that are being used on that site, would take, as chief identified, collaboration of many resources in the area and utilization of the statewide mutual aid compact to bring resources in. As far as this goes, we focused more in the discussions on not necessarily that large incident, but as a, as a building, there's the potential of emergency services, EMS calls, small fires, small emergencies that can happen there, and because this area is located on state land within the town, we are not able to respond there without having an agreement. So essentially, what you're looking at in front of you is the agreement for us to be able to provide the same service level that we were providing currently to the other, to the citizens of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda, item A.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. The second item, I was asked to remove it per our attorney because we do need to reword it as stated here. A motion to approve the attached settlement participation form and authorizing the mayor, town manager, and town attorney to execute this form along with similar documentation to memorialize the town's desire to participate in the One Arizona Distribution of Opioid Settlement Funds Agreement, including additional settlement and release agreements and additional distribution or manufacturer participation forms necessary for the town to participate in the national opioid settlements. Seeing no further discussion or questions, we would need a motion.
I motion, we approve consent agenda, item B.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, I wanted to take a moment to express condolences again and a sincere thank you. This is for a $5,000 gift for the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center from Mr. Art Heisner Jr., and this is in memory of Eunice Heisner. I wanted to share that thank you to Ms. Ally Feliz. She has been amazing and communicated that Eunice had volunteered with the center for about 24 years, and during her time volunteering, she helped out in all areas. She could be seen at the front desk, she was helping with meals, and she always actively engaged with members and other volunteers and staff. Her son also has been a huge help with the center, and we want to express, again, our gratitude. And the seniors, I learned this evening, they have a group, the Hot Topics, because I had asked what the $5,000 would go for, because it's always nice when we could acknowledge what it will be utilized for, and they had all talked together and decided that it would go towards an upgrade of the blinds at the senior center. So I wanted to share that information so everybody was aware. And we are coming upon the one-year mark since she has passed. She passed last year at Christmas Eve. So, thank you very much, and with no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda, item C.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. And that motion carries. Item 12 is our unfinished business. 12A is Ordinance Number 707-21. This is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Administration by striking Chapter 30 of the Town Code and replacing with a new Title III of the Town Code entitled Administration, Chapter 30 of the Town Code effective January 1st, 2022. Okay. Again, this is our unfinished business. This was... I'll turn it over to Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at our last meeting, both of these items, 12A and 12B, had their first reading and were discussed by Lisa pertaining to the special meeting that council had with regard to changing the council rules. And if you recall, certain portions of those council rules were pulled out of our rules document, and we refer to Town Code. So these are the two fixes in item A and item B that were a result of that. They had to go have two different readings because they're ordinances. They were read and discussed at the last meeting. This is our second reading this evening, and they're on the floor for approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we approve ordinance 707-21 as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item B, Ordinance Number 708-21. This is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Town Organization by striking Chapter 32 of the Town Code and replacing with a Chapter 32 of the Town Code effective January 1st, 2022. Again, this is the same unfinished business. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
I make a motion we approve ordinance number 708-21 as read.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. And that motion carries. Item 13 is new business. A is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of accepting the comprehensive annual financial statement, Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Mayor and Counsel, this is for the whole town-wide annual financial report. A lot of work goes into a comprehensive annual financial report. There's a lot of balancing that has to be done, a lot of accountability, checks and balances, in order to provide the auditor information. They in turn go in and analyze the information, they do spot checking on things, and really go through our items, looking to see if we're in compliance with our policies and procedures and with general accounting principles. Vester Chapman has been very helpful to the town. Anytime we have issues where we need clarification, or we have a problem, or think we may have a problem, they have always been available to contact and speak with. I can't say enough about Mr. Ben Hur. He's been right alongside of us, working all of this time. Given that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Ben Hur to provide an analysis of the financial statements, basically an overview, because I've already written you a comprehensive report prior to this to show a little bit more detail that's more down-to-earth and understanding, because these financial statements can be very intimidating. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
Madam Mayors and the members of the council, so my name is Ben Hur. I'm the Partner of Vester Chapman. We have performed the audit for the town annual comprehensive financial reports. Again, I apologize for the still have the old logos in my presentations. I will make sure that is not the case anymore. Before I start my presentation, I would like to extend our appreciation to the town managements and the finance departments. As you know, Becky mentioned that this is very extensive financial reporting, includes many ways informations about the town's financial status. Without their help and support, it's going to be... It would have been really challenging for us to go through and express our opinions. So, again, this year's audit has been... Went really smooth with all the support, and all the questions we asked was answered, and then documentation has been provided to us for our review immediately. Second slide, please. This presentation is including mainly two different sections. One is the audit ledger summaries, and then the second part of the presentation is financial overview. As I mentioned in the earlier, this financial overview include the summary of informations from the financial report. Next slide, please. So when the auditors is actually express their opinions, we review the financial statements, prepares to make sure all the mature informations, including the financial statements, are in accordance with the generally expected accounting principles. And then, we did not have any deficiencies in internal controls when the town's compiling those informations, and then we do not have any control deficient findings related to that issues. So we were able to express our opinion, a modified opinion, which is clean opinion for the financial statements. Next slide, please. When the non-federal entity receives federal funding over 750, it is required... A single audit is required for the auditors to perform to make sure the major program selected is not... No compliance issues, and the internal controls over compliance is also maintained to proper level. So this year's CFT numbers, federal system listing numbers, 21.019, coronavirus relief funds was selected as a major fund. We tested that program in accordance with compliance supplements, and then we didn't really find any exceptions, any findings related to the single audit program. Next slide, please. Again, this is actually quite a communication for the auditors, basically communicating all the things that had happened during the audit to the mayor and town councils. There was no new accounting standards implemented, and then there was no specific policies adopted. We did not encounter any difficulties during the audit, and then we did not have any disagreement with the managements. Next slide, please. The second part of the presentation is the financial overview. Basically, we summarized all the financial statements, the information with the financial statements, and they show this format. As of June 30th of 2021, the town had the total asset and for inflow about $220 million, and then the total liability and for inflow was $48 million, which resulted in town's net position $120 million, $172 million net position. Next slide, please. This is actually, again, another overview of the revenue during the 2020. Total revenue reported in financial statements was approximately $47 million, and then out of that $47 million, 21% is came from the charge for services, which including the activities from the proprietary funds. And then, about $9 million is came from state share revenues, and another $9 million is federal and the state grants. Next one, please. This is... Basically shows the composition of expenses during 2021. Approximately $10 million is spent for the public safety functions, and $5.5 million general government, and the $6 million is spent for the highway street. The next one, please. This one is kind of basically shows a trending of the revenue supply sources between 2017 and through the 2021. The your right-hand numbers is basically shows the 2017s, and then to the left is showing the revenue trendings through the 2021. All the detailed informations reflected in this, the graphs are, you can find it from the actual financial statements. That is end of my presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Hur?
I have a question.
Proceed.
What is in the capital assets? What constitutes a capital asset?
Capital asset?
Capital?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, capital asset is made out of the many different type of the asset, most likely use, most of times their useful life is more than one years. So it includes infrastructures, building, properties, all the equipments town have. Those are basically made up of those capital asset numbers.
It doesn't include vehicles and things like that, does it?
It also include the vehicles, too.
I thought we expensed those.
Anytime that the town records capital assets, we have special accounting categories that we use, and we have a capital asset policy and procedure that lays out what a capital asset is. Anytime you're accepting infrastructure, also from outside agencies such as Pulte or D.R. Horton, that is a capital asset, and at times, there may be no exchange of monies, like donations, or dedications, or properties. Those are still capital assets that have to be recorded into the town's books. So, we have all of these different things coming in from all sides, and we have a very stringent way of capturing all these items, and we have a clerk that records all of them, and she is very good at it. But I also needed to make a comment that I always fail to do. We have a lot of grants right now, and they are very technical grants. I would be remiss in my duties if I did not give kudos to Jennifer Evans. She tracks those things, and she is right on those grants all the time. She's an excellent grants person for the town to have, and this year is going to be particularly challenging, because not only does she handle the grants, she's handling special projects. So, I just wanted to mention Jennifer, because she kind of gets lost sometimes in all this... Even though her title and her position doesn't fall into accounting, she's an accountant for all of these items.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't speak up. An annual audit seems like a pretty pedestrian item for a council agenda, but this is the cleanest audit I've ever seen in my entire career, and that is a credit to our staff, to Becky and her team for the hard work that they put in day-to-day, our department directors, Jennifer Evans. It's unbelievable. Every other year, we have a couple of deficiencies, things that we need to fix. Some cities have a whole page of things. I would encourage Mark or members of the public to take a look at the audited financial statements from other cities. This is an unbelievably great result from a absolutely wonderful team that takes a lot of pride in producing the best financial accounting that can be provided, and I'm sure will get awarded from the governor's office again, or GFOAZ for the quality of our financial statements. I just didn't want it to be lost on folks what a stupendous result this is, and to congratulate counsel and our team on such an achievement.
Thank you for elaborating that. With no further ado, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the acceptance of comprehensive annual financial statement.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. And that motion carries. Item B is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval to Proceed with a Development Impact Fee Study that Includes Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan. Ms. Jimenez?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Counsel, I wanted to come before you to request that we proceed on a development impact fee study. There has been so many changes in the last couple of years that we really need to take a look at our current infrastructure plans, and to go ahead and get this study started. The town engaged Tischler Vice in 2017 to do a study, and at that time, the cost of the project was about $102,000 plus, and it was adopted by ordinance 672-19 in 2019. These typically take a little while to do, because you have to do land use assumptions, you have to have a solid capital project plan, and we're already beginning to work on that. So, I have outlined everything in our RCA, and also in a provisional or a draft... Pardon me. A draft calendar of events. Now, we may not hit some of these items, depending on how long it takes to develop the capital plan, but we are sure striving to get this done, and I don't anticipate it's going to take as long as the last one. We're going to try to hit it and get our consultant on board as soon as possible, and it may need to be paid half in, or a portion in this year, in the balance in next year. But in the last development impact fee study, they did provide a means in the impact fee itself to where we actually reserve monies for the impact fee study. So we have a good portion of it right now, and by the end of the year, I suspect we'll have a majority of it. But I just wanted to go ahead and get you all thinking about this impact fee study and the permission to move ahead on it.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Jimenez?
No.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve to proceed with a development impact fee study that includes land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. And our motion carries.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Item 14 is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, got a few items tonight. The first, I would like to introduce Mr. Jeff Graves. If you'd like to wave at everybody, Jeff. Jeff just joined us as our new PIO and Intergovernmental Relations Manager. You'll start seeing a lot of Jeff. I think that you probably saw all of the Facebook posts that occurred this weekend with the pictures from the events and what have you. Jeff went over with us all of our Facebook metrics today at our staff meeting, but here in the near future, he's going to be bringing the legislative agenda forward and start giving legislative updates at council meetings. So, please say hello to Jeff and welcome him to the team. Secondarily, I just received notice last week that the Florence Fire Department just received a $14,000 grant from the Dennis Leary Firefighters Association. With that money, the department will receive 30 particulate hoods, three sets of coveralls, and extractor washer, an additional one beyond the one that we have now. So, we'll have one at Station 2 as well. We have one at Station 1. It sounds like we're going to be getting one at Station 2. So that's great news. Next, the library was just awarded a ARPA STEAM grant. STEAM refers to science, technology, engineering, and math for new library equipment. If you haven't stopped by the library here recently, the old TEAM room is being changed into the STEAM room. Kind of funny, STEAM room. They just repainted the room. Last I was over there, which was on Saturday, the new furniture was sitting in boxes outside the room, and that is going to become our place to locate 3D printers and different items for folks to use in the Town of Florence, similar to what we all saw in Colorado Springs a few years ago, to make the library more interactive. The STEAM award is $18,000, and what an exciting thing. So, we look forward to that room being put to good use. Lastly, I think that this one will be close to councilmember... Lastly, I think that this one will be close to Councilmember Anderson's heart. We have been applying for several years now for a grant from Safe Routes to School to put electronic feedback signs at the Anthem School. So we just were notified here not long ago that we will be funded for that project in fiscal year 2023 for those improvements. That's my manager's report.
Thank you very much for that. Pretty exciting. Congratulations to all. Department reports. Does any member of our council have a question for our department heads? Councilmember Hughes?
The community development, like you'd stopped me before and said that there's still no code compliance report that's in the report. Can you tell the council about what the problem was?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and Councilmember Hughes, thanks for bringing that up. So what we had done, so this was brought to us on the floor by Ms. Hughes wanting a little more in-depth of a report, quite basically wanting to know some repeat offenders and that kind of thing. And I have to tell you, I thought it was going to be an easier report than it is. So in order to get those figures, we actually have to build a report. And through that process, we are being very careful that the numbers are accurate. We will probably have that report done this week. For sure, we'll have it in our next report. But what we have done, I've been working with Councilmember Hughes as far as, since it was her thought process, kind of exactly what she wants to see. So I'll have that out pretty quick for council, for any input as well, if there's anything else on there. You'll see the report will go from probably six lines to possibly a couple pages. It'll be a little more in-depth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, department heads for your reports. This is our second call to the public for anybody who would like to speak at this time, either in person or online. Yes? Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we did receive an email this afternoon and an individual asked me to read a comment into the record. It is from Mr. Aaron Lapidus. He stated that he has suffered damages and does not want to see things escalate regarding police department and would like the police to review their policies. We did a little research regarding this comment this afternoon and found that there was a individual that was cited for not having a business license and going door-to-door distributing flyers. I believe that's what it's about, but we'll do some more research to figure that out.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening at our call to the public? Seeing no such movement, I'm going to go ahead and call, close our second call to the So we have a call to the council. Yep, here it is, sorry. I circled it and when I circled it, my eyes went down to adjournment to executive session and I thought, no, we're going on break until January. We want to be able to talk and especially celebrate. I just want to kick off our call to the council because we had some spectacular events recently and this past weekend was the light parade, this past Friday night. And Michael Groves, thank you so much for everything that you did in regards to setting the lights up. He added twenty-six more light poles, totaling forty-six poles at one thousand five hundred feet of garland, three thousand four hundred feet of lights, totaling twenty thousand lights just on the light poles. And they were spread out all through the town buildings, the trees. I believe he said there was about one hundred thousand lights in all this year and it was all hung in just a short span of two weeks. So the turnout this past Friday evening was approximately three thousand individuals congregating right here on Main Street in Florence, celebrating with the artificial snow and all of the activities and events that spanned from setup in Heritage Park all the way down to Belva's Real Estate where they had gingerbread contests. And at the Silver King, I'll let you talk about that as well, just some great things that happened. And that's what our holidays and our community is about, coming together and celebrating. The weekend before Thanksgiving, just the rodeo again. Everybody that was out and celebrating together, it was spectacular. So as we continue on in our holiday season, we just want to encourage everybody to, you know, support local, make sure you're out in the community and enjoying the times together. And if you haven't had a chance to experience the Hallmark Holiday that we have set up downtown, it's absolutely beautiful at night. So with our call to the council, I'm going to kick it off with Councilmember Mendoza.
Well, I think for, tomorrow's a big day for the school. The school board is having a meeting about their boundaries. They're going to change their boundaries, so they're going to change where some of the kids are going to school. It's not going to affect Florence Cave too much, but it will affect all the other schools. If there's anyone that's concerned about where their child might be going next year, there is the school board tomorrow, a school board meeting at 5:30 at the district office. I think that's it for that. As far as the activities that we've had in town, it just seems to get better and better every time and more and more people every time. It's exciting to see all these people. I guess that's it for me.
The rodeo was phenomenal. I've never seen the rodeo grounds look so good as it did and there were so many, so many people and I loved the whole weekend. It was just, it was encouraging, you know. So, and you've said most everything else, so. Ditto to everybody that worked on the rodeo and the parade.
I would like to thank Chief Falls again, like just about every week. We did a Thanksgiving dinner giveaway and we went to some houses, went to some doors and then we did a couple of police stops, which one, we caught this lady speeding like a bat out of hell downtown. Actually, and it turned out to be Mrs. Hughes. And our town manager, we decided to pull them over and give them a turkey. We didn't know. Chief, I hope that officer still has his job. But it was a great event. We gave out, what, fourteen, fifteen turkey dinners? It was, it was, it was real good. I had a real good time and I'd like to thank the chief for inviting me to that. Really had a good time. And the events downtown, that was, that was great. I ain't seen that many people downtown in a long time. It also got a little scary because you're from Florence and see that many people you don't know in Florence is weird. But it was good. I think the shops and everybody got a whole lot of business, so. Everybody, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
I want to know how fast you were going.
She was doing about ninety.
I would love to do one of those. Not the California roll, but pulling someone over and then giving them something else instead of a ticket. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I have several things I want to, I want to thank Elon. I asked this week where we stood on our grants and found out that we still have about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the downtown renovation grants. We have about eleven thousand in the facade grants. So we need to encourage people to turn in some applications because that money's going to go away if we don't spend it. So we have complained for years about not helping the businesses downtown and we're trying to do that now. So if you know of a business that needs some help, tell them to apply. And one other thing that I told Lisa that I was going to mention tonight is the logos on the vehicles. We need to make the logos bigger. Those white logos on those white trucks, you can't hardly see them. So we need to have bigger logos on our, particularly the white vehicles. We've had so much going on though, good things going on. The Chamber had their social this week and it was hosted by all things, the Hospice of the Valley. And it was quite interesting because Hospice of the Valley does more than just, you know, pre-death services. And if you have a chance to go onto their website, you can, you can find out all the services that they have. And it was, it was interesting that the Chamber put this on. I want to thank the Chamber for doing that. And we've talked about our Parks and Rec Department tonight and Ally and her team. There's just not enough that we can say about all the work that they've done over the last month or so. And I want to thank them for the parades that they had. I want to thank Virgie for the picnic that she put on for the town employees. It was a different approach, you know, the town's been having a Christmas dinner for the employees for years and the committee decided to do something different this year and had a picnic. And we had so much food, it was unbelievable. And it was outstanding and everybody had a good time. So I want to thank the town and Virgie for inviting me because I enjoyed it. So I guess that's about everything I have. I want to again thank the town. We have such great employees here and they all are doing such a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember. Did you have something you wanted to add, Mr. Belander?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Councilmember Anderson alluded to grant funds available. There are actually fifty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars in the revitalization fund and four thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars available in the facade grant fund.
Oh, I must have misread that.
Yeah, I apologize. The numbers are close together, so you probably just eyes jumped up to the line above.
Thank you. Well, still, we have money available.
That's correct. So please apply.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
First, I would like to congratulate our neighboring community, Queen Creek, and their new police department. Very exciting for them, I'm sure. Let's make sure we treat our officers kindly so they don't go work for them. We want to keep, keep our officers and our, our police department and all of our employees here because we're a little selfish. And we are competing. If you don't think that our employees are being sought after, you are sadly mistaken. We have some great people that work for the town of Florence and other towns have started to recognize that and they are coming after our staff. So let's, let's keep our eyes open and be really kind and thankful of the people that we have here that do amazing jobs for our town so that we can have great events like the parades and stuff. I have heard not a single bad thing about our last couple of events. And every time I turn around, people are like, God, there's something going on constantly. Like they almost need to take a nap. And so it's great to hear that. Junior Prada was such a success. I know just speaking with the sandwich shop in general, normally that event doesn't bring her a lot of business. Normally, it's just her assistant, Bree, works it, they make a couple of sandwiches, they, you know, just make it through the day. And this year, they had to have three people working and they were working like crazy. They couldn't even keep up. And that was, you know, with every business, all the restaurants were busy, we had vendors, it was busy, busy. And even after the event, usually after the parade, the town, you know, the street kind of empties. People were here for a couple hours after the event, still, you know, just mingling and just you could feel the excitement. And then we follow it up with our great Christmas parade. And again, just all the shops were after the parade, still sitting there watching. All the vendors in the parking lot still had lines. There were lines in all of our other shops. You know, you go to the taco place and they're like, it's an hour wait to get a taco. And so it's just, it's so exciting because we all have worked very hard, especially with, you know, our communities that you guys have done an awesome job getting everything coordinated and sometimes having to deal with last-minute changes and things like that. I know for the parade, John and I worked really hard on, on representing council with the float. I almost got ran over by the float. It's okay, not a big deal. I had to recruit somebody from the, from the posse's float to help me hand out candy because nobody else was there to help me hand out candy. Handing out candy for the Christmas parade? No. Yeah, no, for Christmas parade, it was just me and John. And so just, I want to, you know, just say what a great events we've had. I'm looking forward to the rest of them. And that's about it.
Sweet, I thought you were talking about Junior Prada. I was like, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Trying to give a little shout out.
All right, everybody, happy holidays, happy new year. If you need anything, we're here, but there is not another meeting until the first Monday in November. Oh, my Lord. That's because we had the Junior Prada on the brain for a moment. Yeah, January. We do have an executive session this evening for the purposes of discussions or consultations regarding contract matters with regards to potential economic development within the town limits, which is always an exciting topic. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed same side, and motion carries. We are adjourned.